The shortest, steepest railway was shut down in 2013 after a derailment. Mayor Eric Garcetti has launched a motion at a Metro board meeting to look into helping to reopen the site after a petition by hundreds of fans, historians, and tour operators. However, Metro does not own or operate the facility.
I want to be very clear with directors, I don't think that MTA should take over operations of Angel's Flight, but MTA and this board should support the restoration of service on this historic gem that's right now caught up in a lot of bureaucratic hurdles between the federal and state agencies.
Angel's Flight cost only a penny to ride when it was first built in 1901. It became an iconic symbol of LA's heyday, connecting the affluent Bunker Hill above with downtown LA below. It was shut down once in the 60s due to urban redevelopment before reopening in the 90s. Then it was shut down and reopened several times due to safety issues, including a 2001 accident that killed one victim. But supporters say it's time to let Angel's Flight soar again.
Having a way for people to get back to Bunker Hill after lunch is a huge boon for business.
This is a critical economic link between Bunker Hill. It's not an amusement ride.
Most people agree Angel's Flight is an important part of downtown LA's past, but some disagree over whether it should be part of its future.
I've ridden it when it started running again in 2010. And it's scary. I mean, it shakes from side to side, then all of a sudden it lunges forward, and you look up there and there's this one rope that's holding the whole thing as it's going up the hill, and you hear the scraping of the wheels against the rails. And it was a great idea 115 years ago, but it's time to take the two cars and put in two modern escalators.
I don't want to open up a can of worms that becomes very, very expensive for something that is not really ours.
In the end, the board agreed to study the feasibility of helping to reopen this symbol of LA history and come back with a report in 60 days. I'm Anna Marcos for LA This Week.
By the way, Angel's Flight still uses the original rail cars used in 1901. The number of older Americans who go to bed hungry is on the rise. As Gil Reyes reports, food policy experts gathered in downtown to talk about solutions.
We're very concerned because the population is growing very dramatically, and in the last few years we have seen an increase, as the experts were quoting today, of over 45% increase in hunger among seniors.
Laura Trejo from the city's Department of Aging relaying some heartbreaking statistics regarding seniors during this panel discussion at the California Endowment. Experts say nearly a quarter of low-income older adults struggle to put food on the table. They're often too overwhelmed by the cost of rent and prescription drugs, and don't take advantage of food assistance programs because they're either too prideful or unaware. This ends up worsening health problems related to aging such as diabetes, costing our healthcare system billions of dollars extra each year.
So we're looking at not only a moral imperative to do right by the generations that came before us, but it's bad economics to engage in the kind of neglect that has been institutionalized.
LA City Councilman Mitch O'Farrell says his program called Market Match is helping. Market Match offers people of low income matching dollars to buy fresh produce at neighborhood farmers markets. But elected officials and food policy experts agree more food delivery programs and affordable housing are needed to help satisfy the needs of a growing population. Gil Reyes for LA This Week.
Experts say more than 300,000 seniors in LA County can't make ends meet. While new metro funding is getting LA bus shelters plugged into high tech, Anna Marcos takes us to the first site in a pilot program that could change how Angelenos use public transportation.
This bus shelter in downtown LA has arrived into the 21st century, energy efficient and cyber-ready. The City Hall Bus Shelter is the first of its kind in a new pilot program. It comes complete with a USB port for charging your mobile device, free Wi-Fi, real-time bus arrival information, LED lighting which cuts energy use in half, and even something called beacon technology.
That when you're close to something, the beacons that are on our signs can hook up with our cellphone users to give you information that you need.
Information such as where is the next bus stop, or when is the next bus.
Let's keep innovation moving, creating a city that daily delivers the good life to all of its residents.
Mayor Eric Garcetti says it's all about engineering the city that responds to residents' needs.
It's about having a bus stop that is befitting a city in the 21st century. So thank you for being here this morning to get a taste of the future of transportation.
The program will be expanding its high-tech features to hundreds of other LA County bus shelters in the near future. I'm Anna Marcos for LA This Week.
The real-time electronic displays already in use at the City Hall Bus Shelter have been rolled out to nine other downtown bus shelters. Well, from improved technology of bus shelters to new safety upgrades for MetroLink trains, as Gil Reyes reports, the improvements were prompted by a deadly train collision in Chatsworth.
Hi, everybody. Hello.
U.S. Senator Barbara Boxer about to test a safety system that's now equipped on all MetroLink trains. Called Positive Train Control, it uses GPS technology to avoid collisions.
And it is so very impressive. I watched on the screen as the system warned the engineer there was a problem, and the system took over as it needed to, to slow down the train and to stop the train.
The system now installed on all 341 miles of MetroLink track. The final piece of track received the technology in June, according to transportation officials at this news conference at downtown's Union Station. Elected leaders pushed for safety upgrades after a deadly collision between a MetroLink train and a Union Pacific Freight train in Chatsworth back in 2008. 25 people died, more than 130 injured.
We passed rail safety legislation requiring all rail lines in the nation to implement Positive Train Control by the end of this year. I was proud to work with Senator Feinstein on this law.
MetroLink is among the first commuter rail lines to have PTC installed throughout its entire transit line. In downtown LA, Gil Reyes for LA This Week.
MetroLink is also working to install PTC along an additional 170 miles of track it shares with Union Pacific and two other rail networks. While it's a chance for kids to experience what LAPD officers face every day and how the law plays a role in how they do their jobs, kids got an opportunity to play a role themselves thanks to a unique program. These students at Berendom Middle School are acting out real-life scenarios with LAPD officers as part of a Cops and Kids program. The simulations give the kids an opportunity to experience and learn about why officers do what they do through the eyes of police, suspects, and witnesses. The kids here are taught valuable lessons about behaviors that can impact the rest of their lives. One kid even got arrested, not for real, of course.
I would have felt like kind of angered and sad by making that mistake of driving drunk and destroying other properties. But once you do something like that, like ruin the law, you have to pay consequences.
The scenarios, from loud music to drunk driving, help the kids not only learn about how the law works, but also that police officers are approachable and are there to support them and the community.
The officers aren't mean how people say they are?
LAPD officials say the program, which seeks to promote positive interaction between children and police officers, is essential in helping teach important lessons to both LAPD officers and the students.
This is one in which we try to build the relationships, build a sense of trust, build a sense of community with even our youngest members of these neighborhoods.
The program, which works in collaboration with the Constitutional Rights Foundation, teaches kids about constitutional rights, search and seizure, probable cause, and more.
And that's the goal of today, that they get some insight into police work as to why we do things. They're supposed to just see it on TV or in the movies and so forth.
By giving a realistic picture of the challenges faced by officers, the simulation helped the students better understand the daily demands of police work.
If people want to threaten them, they have the right to defend themselves, and the police officer's job is very serious because if you're a police officer and you're trying to help someone, I don't think you would want to cause more trouble for them to help and stop the trouble.
The children believe that now they're empowered, they're respected by law enforcement as well, to be our eyes and ears, to learn that even police officers have to be guided by rules and regulations, just as they do in the school, and we have to treat everybody with dignity and respect.
Cops and kids working together for peace on the streets. The Cops and Kids program began more than 20 years ago in an effort to establish open lines of communication between students and law enforcement. While video games are big business, generating more than $22 billion in worldwide sales each year, with no signs of slowing down, the city hopes to cash in by luring popular game makers to LA while hosting the biggest gaming trade show on the planet. Gil Reyes reports from E3.
The city of LA's biggest convention of the year lures video gamers from as far away as Scandinavia.
Pretty overwhelming and amazing, lots, lots of, lots of people.
Lisa Holloway-Adaway from Sweden is one of 50,000 visitors expected to pack the LA Convention Center for E3, the Electronic Entertainment Expo. Armed with handheld controllers and wearing virtual reality Oculus goggles, they sample the most popular soon-to-be-released titles, games like Uncharted 4: A Thief's End and Halo 5: Guardians. Players say they enjoy Halo's enhanced multiplayer options.
So you have 12 players on each team, so it's 24 players total versus the 16 before.
Officials say this three-day convention pumps $40 million into LA's economy. That includes dinner and drinks after saving the universe, also 28,000 additional hotel room nights, according to the LA Tourism and Convention Board.
Is it possible not to spend money while you're here in Los Angeles? Yes, I'll be dropping dollars.
On top of all this, the city is actively courting gaming and other tech companies to work here in Los Angeles through various tax incentives and other measures, most notably the company Riot Games relocated here in April, bringing 1,000 employees. But enough about economics, let's get back to the games. Multiplayer gameplay, also a popular feature in Star Wars Battlefront. The first Star Wars game since the franchise was bought by Disney allows up to 40 players.
Pretty fun playing with another person, like add more of the fun factor to it.
Star Wars Battlefront will be released in time for the holiday gift-giving season. At E3, Gil Reyes for LA This Week.
This marked the first year that video gaming fans could attend E3. Until now, only journalists and company investors were invited. Well, it's a good thing when the boss throws you a party. It's even better when he's got enough food to feed hundreds. And LA City Council President Herb Wesson really knows how to throw an office party. Anna Marcos has the story.
Call it an international luau: barbecue chicken, roast Hawaiian-style pig, burgers, spaghetti, ribs, tacos, and Chinese food. All on tap as 500 workers stop by for the annual thank-you luncheon for city employees.
The food and the tacos, man, the hot salsa is asking me to go back for more, and I will.
It's fantastic. It's a wonderful event, something that I look forward to every year. Good food, good people.
Those good people throwing the party, City Council President Herb Wesson and his staff. He says it's a token of his appreciation for all that city workers do.
Many of them are working, you know, extremely hard to make up for lack of staff. They rarely complain. Somehow, some way, they always get the job done.
City workers were all invited, but the majority came from City Hall and Wesson's own District 10.
And this is our area. We maintain all the signs, traffic markings, and streets, keep it safe.
The food is awesome. The chicken is great. The tacos are fabulous, and I'm just so thankful that he does this for us.
On this day, whether it was Department of Transportation crews, or cops, or just old-time friends, at this party, everyone came together as one big city family. I'm Anna Marcos for LA This Week.
And all that delicious food you saw came from restaurants in Councilmember Wesson's own District 10. While July marked the silver anniversary of the Americans with Disabilities Act, Gil Reyes shows us some very special citizens who displayed their talents at a celebration downtown.
Why are there so many songs about rainbows and what's on the other side?
People marched near City Hall to celebrate the 25th anniversary of the Americans with Disabilities Act. People like seven-year-old Nathan.
I was born blind, but that doesn't mean I do not see. I just see differently, with my fingers, my ears, my nose, and most importantly, with my heart.
The Americans with Disabilities Act is intended to protect disabled people from discrimination.
We're still not there, and we're still fighting, and businesses are still not accessible.
LA officials say that needs to change globally.
There is a lot of international consideration to have a treaty that nations should all sign onto. The United States has not signed onto it yet. But in that spirit, the city of Los Angeles tries to do everything we can to go above and beyond the requirements of the ADA. So making sure our employees have accessible workstations, we try and make sure all of our citizens, again, have access literally to our buildings.
In hopes of one day equality for all.
Someday we'll find it, the rainbow connection, the lover, the dreamer's land.
Gil Reyes for LA This Week.
Thank you. The Americans with Disabilities Act was signed in 1990 by then-President George H.W. Bush. A multimillion-dollar luxury development in downtown LA begins to take shape. A Spanish-language channel store takes flight at LAX, and improvements at a Sunland Area Park. All these stories in City B. This construction site will soon be transformed into a high-end luxury development. LA Mayor Eric Garcetti attended a groundbreaking ceremony of the $500 million mixed-use complex at 1200 South Figueroa. The 1.6 million-square-foot project will include retail space and 648 luxury rental units across from LA Live and Staples Center. During the ceremony, more than a dozen homeless advocates held a protest, calling attention to the lack of affordable housing in the city and increased enforcement of laws, removing homeless encampments in downtown LA. The complex, set to be completed by late 2017, is being developed on a 2.7-acre lot close to a metro rail station. It will include two 35-story residential towers with 48,000 square feet of retail space and 1,770 parking spaces. With a development also set to feature 15,000 square feet of digital signage, the project is being built by developers as something that will rival New York City's Times Square. The construction project is set to create approximately 1,000 jobs locally and serve as a step closer toward Mayor Garcetti's goal of building 100,000 housing units by 2021. Mayor Garcetti was also on hand at a ribbon-cutting at LAX, celebrating the opening of Univision's two retail stores inside Terminal 2. The specialty stores, which are the first Univision stores to be opened nationwide, offer a variety of items and merchandise, and large HD video screens feature programming from the Spanish-language networks.
What we see now when passengers come to Terminal 2 while they're waiting for their flights is they can spend great time and come to what will be the first store to bear the name of Univision, which we are so proud of.
Oro Vista Park, which spans 8.2 acres in the Tejanga Sunland community, recently received a series of improvements that officials say increases accessibility while retaining its natural beauty. Improvements to the site include new trails that link to existing hiking and riding trails, a staging area with parking for cars and horse trailers, landscaping with native plants, a demonstration garden with smart irrigation system, and informational signage, picnic tables, and a shade structure. This project was a collaborative effort made possible by the Department of Recreation and Parks, the Office of Councilmember Felipe Fuentes, the City of Los Angeles Bureau of Engineering, and the community members of the Tejanga Sunland Area. The LA Bureau of Sanitation was out in full force, keeping our city streets and sidewalks looking better than ever. That's the focus of this week in tweets. The Bureau of Sanitation's Alex Haloo posted several before-and-after photos of the cleanup effort. He tweeted, "Wow, #CleanStreetsInitiative crews picked up over 21 tons of illegally dumped construction waste in CD7." He also posted photos of debris on a city sidewalk in CD1 and how clean it looked after crews cleaned it all up. He tweeted, "CleanStreetsInitiative picked up two tons of this CD1 corner. We had to take pics from all angles." Another photo showed furniture, mattresses, and other items littering the sidewalk. The tweet read, "CleanStreets picked up over five tons of bulky items off the streets." And another street corner in CD2 was transformed. Haloo posted, "Great job in picking up two tons of waste off the CD2 street corner." And that's a look at this week in tweets. A performer who gets kids excited about music, enjoying the sights on two wheels, and looking back at a pivotal time in U.S. race relations. All this and this week's things to do.
Won't somebody tell me? Answer if you can. I need somebody to tell me, where is the ice cream man?
Enjoy a musical performance for the whole family. Roots rocker Randy Kaplan, described by New York Magazine as one of those "happy-they-exist" people, delivers his trademark fast-talking, singing rap, and bluegrass calypso tunes, Tin Pan Alley classics, Broadway numbers, and more. Since 2006, Kaplan has released five not just-for-kids albums, and according to Timeout New York Kids, Kaplan doesn't dumb it down for the kids, he just expects them to come along for the ride, and they do. His work included in numerous top-10 lists, has been honored by the National Parenting Publication Awards and the Nickelodeon Parents Pick Awards. You can check him out on Saturday, August 8 at 12 and 2 p.m. at the Skrull Ball Center located at 2701 North Sepulveda Boulevard. And jump on your bike for Ciclovia, which opens roads to bicyclists, pedestrians, and other non-car traffic. The next event will be held in Culver City and Venice on Sunday, August 9. The six-mile route encourages people to bike or walk between Culver City and the beaches of Venice by way of Palms, Marbista, and other beachside neighborhoods. Officials said participants will be able to explore diverse neighborhoods, discover new businesses, and even take a dip in the Pacific. The festival takes place from 9 a.m. to 4 p.m. For details, visit ciclovia.org. On the 50th anniversary of the 1965 Watts Rebellion, the Hammer Museum looks back at the past and present of race relations in the United States with community organizers, authors, and historians. This ongoing series, titled The Watts Rebellion 50 Years Later, of timely, thought-provoking events, addresses current social and political issues. The program takes place on Sunday, August 9 from 2 to 4 p.m. at the Hammer Museum located at 10899 Wilshire Boulevard. Tickets are required and available at the box office one hour before the program. For more, visit hammer.ucla.edu. And that's a look at some things to do. And finally this week, it's the Center for Culture and Education in Los Angeles, and now Plaza de la Raza is about to make it even easier for folks to visit and enjoy all it has to offer. This dirt lot at Plaza de la Raza will soon be transformed into a landscaped parking lot with 30 new parking spaces that are also environmentally friendly.
We're also very concerned, as you are, about the environment. And here, we're going to put in what we call permeable pavers where we park, so the water actually will be infiltrated and will protect the lake here from the parking lot runoff.
City officials and community members recently gathered at Lincoln Park to break ground on the new lot, which will feature sustainable drought-tolerant plants, lighting, new smart irrigation, and a seating area facing the lake. Councilmember Gil Sadio said the groundbreaking reflects his longtime commitment to the plaza.
I have a little button someplace in my house, and it has a little pyramid, and it has, you know, the whole thing. And we used to sell these buttons so that we could raise money for Plaza.
Officials say that the new parking area at Plaza de la Raza, which recently celebrated its 45th year anniversary of presenting art and culture to the community, will also be used for other activities.
When you're doing something at a public space like Plaza de la Raza, it's not just a parking lot. It's another opportunity to do something creative.
A parking lot with the potential of becoming another outlet for even more artistic expression. And that's going to do it for this edition. I'm Yana Kane. From all of us here at LA This Week, thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org. You can also follow and like us on Facebook. We'll see you back here next week for more of LA This Week.
The city of Los Angeles receives over 2 million 911 calls every year. Hello, I'm Mayor Eric Garcetti.
I'm Chief Charlie Beck. A significant number of 911 calls are not emergencies.
911 should be used for emergency calls, such as preservation of life, a crime in progress, prevention of a crime, or a public hazard.
If your call is not an emergency, such as a loud party, verbal dispute, public nuisance, or lost or missing property, you can dial 1-877-ASK-LAPD to have the police respond.
Remember, call 1-877-ASK-LAPD for non-emergency calls.
Los Angeles Police Department, what are you reporting?
Hi, I'm Chris. I'm an Ayahgar yoga teacher here in Los Angeles, and you're watching LA City View, Channel 35, Our City, Our Channel. Namaste.[1591.03]
Sergeants, please call the members. Let me know their ETAs. I do want to give a big shout-out to Mr. Englander Fuentes, Harris Dawson, Martinez, and O'Farrell for being members of today's on-time caucus. Sergeant?
Good morning. Welcome to Los Angeles City Council. Today is Friday, August 7th, and welcome to Van Nuys City Hall. We are live on the Internet and streaming as well, and on Channel 35. So with that, Madam Clerk, if we can please call the roll.
Blooming Philbonne, Buscaino Sadio, Englander Fuentes, Harris Dawson, Weezer, Caress Corcoran, Martinez, O'Farrell, Price, Rue, Wesson, 10 members present in accord, Mr. President.
Great, thank you very much. And if we could, approval of the minutes, the first order of business?
Approval of the minutes.
Okay, we'll go ahead. Mr. Fuentes moves. Mr. Correct seconds. Next items, please.
Commitment to resolutions for approval.
Okay. Ms. Martinez moves. Mr. O'Farrell, seconds. Next items, please.
Items 1 through 5 are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes required for consideration.
Okay, those are considered without objection. That'll be the order?
And there are cards on all five items.
Of course. Okay, so we'll go ahead and hold those as well.
On the continuation agenda, item 6 is an item for which a public hearing has not been held. 10 votes required for consideration.
Okay, that is being considered before us. Council members, open the roll for consideration, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Okay.
And there's a card on that item.
We'll hold that for the card as well.
To President, that brings council to presentations or items called special.
Okay. And for presentations, we've got first CD 14 is up. All ready? Okay, CD 3, we'll go ahead if CD 3 is ready. Well, I think that's all gathered around. Yeah, come on, bring it in, bring it in. Thank you, Mr. President, colleagues, honored guests. Today, I have the distinct honor and privilege to have with me Reseda High School Police Academy Magnet Program. Joining me, joining me, we've got Captain Davila, we've got program coordinator Elise Kayen, we've got Principal Jose Rodriguez, we've got a lot of folks here as well, who's, they're all going to get certificates, but I'm not going to name everybody at the moment, other officers and students that are instrumental to the success of this program. This year, Reseda High School's PAM, which is the acronym for the Police Academy Magnet, was selected over 150 proposals as a finalist in the Pioneer Institute's Better Government Competition. Pioneer Institute's Better Government Competition was founded in 1991. It's an annual citizens' idea contest that seeks out and rewards the most innovative public policy proposals. Reseda High School's Academy Magnet Program is really amazing. What they've done, they were established in September of 1998 as a specialized school within a school that prepares interested young men and women for careers in law enforcement. It's one of four Police Academy high schools and two junior Police Academy middle schools in the Los Angeles Unified School District. Reseda High School's PAM is the product of a unique and longstanding partnership between the LAPD and the LAUSD. The program's mission is to promote academic achievement in all subject areas while providing students career pathways in areas of the law enforcement, criminal justice. They encompass an honors curriculum, physical fitness, regime, weekly uniform inspections, compulsory community service, they've got it all. The program's mission is to produce productive members of society who abide by and revere the law while preparing those interested for a career in law enforcement. Really, it was something that came about after the civil unrest as a way to bring the community and police together. And this is really a great program in doing that, in that it brings, it brings folks together, at-risk youth, other folks together to be part of the police community, to be part of law enforcement. They accomplish their mission by building indelible relationships between teenagers and the police who protect them. An LAPD officer is assigned to the program full-time, serving as a teacher, a mentor, law enforcement resource, and they enrich the Police Academy experience. Over the course of 17 years, Reseda High School's PAM has evolved into a successful, highly structured career pathway program that serves approximately 200 students, grades 9 through 12, with a consistent waitlist of applicants. For the last 10 years, the Reseda Police Academy Magnet has had no lower than 98% graduation rate. That's pretty amazing. 100% post-secondary college military attendance rate, and 97% program-wide attendance, and high school exit exam pass rate no lower than the 90th percentile. That is truly amazing when you think about it. The program has proudly produced LAPD officers, LA sheriffs, Border Patrol officers, correction officers, civilian jobs in the area of forensic science and dispatch operators, with an increase of law enforcement applications coming through very difficult, turbulent times. When a lot of folks are turning away from law enforcement, these folks are turning toward it in a very positive way. The Police Academy is considered a model career pathway program by the Department of Education. They host visits from school districts and police departments across the country. People are looking to see what's happening here, what's happening in the valley, what's happening in Reseda, what's happening with this Police Academy Magnet. It is truly an inspiration in many ways. Now, the program coordinator, Elise Kayen, who I'm going to bring up and give the award to, is an award-winning English teacher and magnet school coordinator in Southern California. She oversees two successful magnet programs. While I'm talking about you, worry, right behind me. Okay, come on up. She oversees two successful magnet programs at Reseda High School, one that partnered with the Los Angeles Police Department, the LAUSD. They prepare high school students for careers in law enforcement. Under her direction, Reseda High School's Police Academy Magnet made a name for itself by producing consistent success in attendance, test passage, graduation, college acceptance rates, and much more. Reseda High School's PAM has caught the attention of law enforcement agencies across the globe and has been featured in City Journal and the American Police Beat magazine. The Pioneer Institute currently recognized Reseda's Police Academy Magnet as a finalist in the Better Government Competition, where Elise received praise for her efforts by the Massachusetts governor. And more importantly, is now receiving praise by the L.A. City Council. Much more important than the Massachusetts governor, as all of us here would agree. And when she's not advocating for kids and for cops, she moonlights as a freelance writer, where she's been involved in the creation and development of television shows. She's also a children's book author, whose first children's book, Patty Pom Poms, was released in the summer of 2009. It's a one-of-three-series book, basically a Renaissance woman doing all sorts of things, multifaceted, including a professional dance career, if you can believe that. In 1984, just a few years ago, she became a member of the '84 Olympic Drill Team and professionally cheered for the Los Angeles Oakland Raiders football team in 1989 through 1996. Of all the things, that's what gets the...
And LA.
Yes, and the, I guess we want our football team back. That's what those claps are about. She remains an active supporter and active participant to organizations near to her heart, such as the Special Olympics, the L.A. Police Foundation, and the TKO Helping Hands. Southern California native, she graduated from California State University, Northridge, in 1993. She's earned her master's degree in educational administration and currently resides in the San Fernando Valley. So congratulations to you. Congratulations to the Reseda High School Police Academy Magnet. I have a certificate for you for the program, and then I've got certificates for each and every one of you that we're going to hand out in a minute, but let's take a group shot right now if you would accept this award on behalf of the Magnet, the principal as well. All right, let's give them all another big round of applause. Excellent. Great job. And a special shout-out, by the way, our very own Building and Safety Frank Bush's granddaughter is up there as well as part of the program, so we'll give her a special, special city family shout-out, too. Sure, you want to say a few words? Go ahead.
Thank you very much. We have formal inspection every year, and council member showed up last year, and we wanted to present him with a picture. I just want to also allude to the fact that the cadets in blue are cadets in our program. We have officers, Captain Davilos, that are here that oversee or run the programs, but the various sheriffs and police officers that you see are all graduates of our program that are now working and serving their city. We're very proud. Thank you, staff, students, principal, and Captain, would you come on up?
Thank you. So, quick question. Did the council member pass the inspection as well?
He actually participated.
Well, this is a great honor. I didn't expect to actually get something in this. This is awesome. This is a great picture, so let's take a picture with the picture.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Why don't we go over to the side cutting here? We're going to give out certificates to all, everybody else here.
Fantastic. Thank you very much. And with that, we're going to turn our attention to some of the agenda items, and first, we're going to go to the special agenda. Mr. Fuentes, did you wish to speak on that?
Excuse me, Mr. President, council, at this time, do you wish to recess the regular...
I'm sorry, yes, we'll go ahead and recess the regular agenda.
Blooming Philbonne, Buscaino Sadio, Englander Fuentes, Harris Dawson, Weezer, Caress Corcoran, Martinez, O'Farrell, Price, Rue, Wesson, 11 members present in accord, Mr. President.
Easy for you to say. Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Mr. President, I'd like to amend item number seven on the special agenda to change the amount from $5,300 to $6,000.
Okay, so we have that. We do have a number of cards, Mr. Fuentes, on this as well. Of course, Mr. Herman, followed by John Walsh, followed by Eric Previn. Whoever makes it up first, feel free to come up to the podium.
Thank you, sir. It is Eric Previn, resident from CD2. And that is very thoughtful, Mr. Fuentes, to increase that from $5,300 to a bit over $6,000. I do very much appreciate that. This is Lopez Canyon Landfill Community Amenities Trust fund money, and obviously, the council member is intended to earmark it. I think this is a great application. This is for an art education program. That's outstanding. There was one very similar, actually, at item 16 on Tuesday. There was some amenities fund money in Mr. Englander's district, which was augmented from $15,000 that was given in May to $20,000 for...
Can you stay on this subject, please?
This is about the amenity trust fund, sir.
Yeah, this is one specific one. If you could stay on that, please.
Okay, but I'm just saying thank you because you were able to give an additional $5,000 to the Chamber of Commerce, which is a different group than an education art fund.
It's a different item, though, sir.
No, no, it was on Tuesday, it was on the agenda, and these are related items, because what we have is we have landfill trust...
He is not talking about this item on this special agenda.
What are you talking about, sir? I just complimented Mr. Fuentes.
Please stay, please stay on the item. Please stay on the item. It's not a conversation. Please stay on the item.
I agree. This is a content-based discrimination. It's inappropriate, sir. I was trying to comment about the way these trust funds work in our community. Both of you have given...
Okay, you're still off-subject, sir. So if you want to finish your time on this specific item, you can do that.
As I said, I support that this is an art education fund. I'm not as supportive of fairs for the Chamber of Commerce. I don't think that's the same kind of application of these funds. You chose that. You're allowed to make those decisions. You've augmented a business group. I am a guy who supports little groups that need help with art education, so that's it. Thank you.
This is, this is not on...
Today on the agenda is with respect to the Lopez Canyon Amenities Funds. It has, with all due respect, Mr. Englander, nothing to do with your council district. I'd ask that the speaker stay on the item that's on the agenda today. This is taking up valuable time, and in my opinion, disrupting the meeting, Mr. City Attorney.
I appreciate that note. Thank you, and we'll remind the other speakers of that as well. Thank you.
at Hollywood Dems. Yes, so we have a canyon landfill. In other words, this toxic poison is brought there. You never see these west of La Brea, you only see them in minority neighborhoods or in the valley. Now, therefore, you decided to ameliorate the problem with $5,000. Will it go to cleaning up the toxic canyon? I hope the cameras here will go out there and take a look at how toxic the Lopez Canyon is, and how much trash, how much garbage, how the wind. It is very, very, very injurious to the health of anybody who lives within 15 miles. But you've solved the problem here. What you're doing is taking $5,300 of our money to fight pollution at Lopez Canyon with an arts education program, where the money will go into Mission College Foundation, which, of course, hands out money to you. We don't need any more arts education. Fund arts education out of that pile of money. Fund toxic cleanup out of the toxic cleanup money. I live in Hollywood, they don't poison our neighborhood, but if you live anywhere within 25-mile radius of Lopez Canyon, I hope you're happy that there's going to be an art education program to protect you from breathing in cancerous crap.
That's okay. Thank you.
What a great educator, reminding us how the Lopez Canyon landfill will contaminate us one way or another. But again, with my short presentation, thank you, John Stewart, and we'll see you again, I'm sure, along with Stephen Colbert.
He is not talking about this.
Yeah, you're not on the subject, so we'll give you a warning as well. Please stay on the subject.
Well, the subject here is about Mr. Fuentes and his landfill community. Now, when you consider making an amendment for transparency, shouldn't that motion already be upfront when you're changing the dollar amount? Just another slippery, sucked-up way of channeling money to a landfill for education. But the subject of the approval of the city attorney, there's no comment. Dion, the monopoly man up there who runs the city under the city attorney pretense of Mike Fuhr, doesn't know anything about these relative fundings. All he does is say, oh, the people here are off-topic, like Mr. Fuentes, shut them up, don't have no transparency.
You're, again, not on the subject. That's your second warning.
Are you not running for council district?
Okay, that's your third warning, so your time is up, sir. That was three warnings. Thank you very much. Can you please go ahead and have a seat? Now you're still disrupting the meeting. Mr. Corcoran?
Mr. President, further to Mr. Fuentes's point, could the president please remind the speakers that when speakers come to the microphone to speak about a topic on our agenda, that topic never includes arguments with the chair or arguments with the city attorney. It is inherently disruptive of this meeting for speakers to come and argue with our staff. They can speak to the item, they are not allowed to argue with the city attorney or argue with the chair. The chair's decision is the chair's decision, and that's the end of the discussion. There's no opportunity for a public member to stand there and argue with the chair. A decision is made, that's it. And I'd appreciate it if the speakers be reminded of that, and so that they can sit down. If they don't like what the chair says, they can sit down and take whatever actions they want later, but slowing this meeting down so that they can argue with the city attorney or argue with the president is just not permitted under any interpretation of the Brown Act or anything else.
I appreciate that note. Thank you very much. Well noted, and thank you for putting that on the record. And we will remind speakers, and you won't have three warnings again. If you're off-subject and you're not on the matter, on the agenda, you'll be asked to walk away from the podium and forfeit your time. And if you continue the disruption, you'll be asked to leave the council meeting. Thank you very much. Miriam? Followed by Donna.
I know, I know. I want to tell you something. I know a lady that lives near this place, and she says it goes piles and piles high, and it's a disparagement to her neighborhood and community, and tell you, it's a bad, bad... Nury, you need to do something about this and spread the trash around the city instead of having all the trash going there. You know, why is the valley always taking all this, over the hill? That's why they didn't want a succession. They blocked this so that they can dump their trash over here, all their trash from the city. They're dumping everything here, folks. We need to do something to stop this. This is a dishonorable, this is a deceiving, a lie, and it needs to stop. So the trash needs to be fairly distributed through the city and not being just dumped in one place. Nury, you need to take action and stop this kind of thing.
Excuse me, please don't address particular members of the council. Stay on the agenda.
Well, she's a representative for this district. I'm sorry to tell you, Mr. Englander, but she has to represent us here. So I'm just letting you know that the fact is, is that what Walsh said, John Walsh said, put it in a nutshell, we need to do something about it and stop just, you know, just letting them get it off and not doing something about it. We need to do something because these people are living next to it all the time, day after day, the trash goes piles and piles high from all the city, and that's not right. Thank you.
Donna?
Seems to me this funding it over for the Mission College is just a cover-up for trying to do something good because what you've got is a terrible situation over here with the Lopez Canyon landfill, just shows you exactly what you think of the San Fernando Valley. Basically, what you think is it's a cash flow, revenue maker, and a great big trash bin. That's what the San Fernando Valley is, mostly to the Los Angeles City Council. That's why you don't bring back video conferencing, because in the meantime, you have this great big landfill, and you're trying to make yourself feel good by having, doing the art education program. In the meantime, you're overlooking the fact that this Lopez Canyon is getting way too big. It was not meant to be over, I think what it does is it's the landfill for all of the San Fernando Valley. You can't just have one little area like that, and probably even Los Angeles, and expect it to be filled up. In the meantime, because everybody's complaining and making, and being upset about how big this is, what you do is you throw them a little dog bone. Here's an art education program. Here's a little dog bone. It's a bad law, bad thing to do, as Wayne Spindler would say if he were here. Unfortunately, he's not here today, so I'll again say it's a bad thing to do to bring, to let the landfill get big, 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 and in the meantime, you'll take pictures and say how wonderful you are, and how you care for the people, and how you care for the San Fernando Valley, and that's why you're here in Van Nuys, and you don't care about the San Fernando Valley. Otherwise, you would open up video conferencing. Thank you.
Okay, that concludes the speakers on this item. Please, we don't applaud or boo speakers, or we'll just let them speak and get through the agenda. So with that, we see no speakers on the queue. Just for the record, Mr. Fuentes, I did second your motion.
Thank you, Mr. Englander. And for the record, the landfill's been closed for almost 30 years now and has various funds on how it is that the dedicated open space in perpetuity will be continued, but one of those dedications was a semenity funds for programs like this, so I request an eye vote.
Great, excellent. Okay, well, nice to hear it's been closed for 30 years, so changes that entire previous discussion. So with that, please go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
That item moves, and I believe that, yes, forthwith, without objection, that'll be the order. Thank you very much. And now, we're going to go ahead and...
Excuse me, Mr. President, should I adjourn the special and return to the regular?
That's exactly what I was going to say. Thank you, Madam Clerk. You're right on top of it. And with that, we'll go ahead and do just that, without objection, and we'll go ahead and open it up for another presentation by council member Jose Weezer. Floor is yours.
As we gather up here, when is this? As we gather up here, I am happy to once again celebrate with our Ecuadorian brothers and sisters to celebrate the 206th anniversary of the call for independence in Ecuador. Los Angeles has a long and rich history of people from all over the world. We are a world within a city, and we're fortunate enough to have a large population of Ecuadorian nationals here in Los Angeles, and it's only fitting that we recognize the struggle for independence that leaders of that proud nation began more than 200 years ago. Today, we celebrate El Grito de la Independencia and look back in appreciation for what occurred on August 10th, 1809, in Quito. That day inspired other liberations throughout Latin America, and it is, as you know, the reason we refer to Quito as La Luz de América, the Light of America, for inspiring other liberations to happen throughout South and Central America. Because Ecuador was the first to shout freedom in South America, others followed, and history remembers it well. So I want to thank all our Ecuadorian brothers and sisters here today because that bold Ecuadorian spirit still endures in each and every one of them and us, and it inspires all of us throughout the world to seek that liberation. So thank you for your heart, your courage, your strength, y que viva Ecuador. We have some distinguished visitors with us here today, as is every year when our brothers and sisters from Ecuador visit us in Cidihua to celebrate the independence. It is a special occasion for us here in Los Angeles and in Ecuador, and we have distinguished visitors each and every year. This year, we have Jimmy Harala. He is Perfecto of Guayas Province, that is similar to what we refer here to as a governor. And we also have with us is the council general, not here yet, right? Inanis, okay. But at this time, if I could introduce you to Jimmy Harala, Perfecto of Guayas Province, to say a few words. Bienvenido. Where's the translator?
Right here.
Okay.
Buen dia. Good morning.
Honorables concejales de la Ciudad de Los Ángeles.
Your honorable...
Consejal Jose Guizar, Consejal del Distrito 14, donde el desfile se realizará el día domingo.
Good morning, honorable city council members. Good morning, honorable council member Jose Weezer.
President.
Of the 14th district, where this, on Sunday, we're going to be celebrating this honor.
President Herb Weston.
President Herb Weston.
Comunidades Ecuatorianos presentes.
Ecuadorian communities present here.
Ciudadanos estadounidenses.
American citizens as well.
Es un placer estar hoy con ustedes.
It is a pleasure to be here today.
Con mis hermanos migrantes.
With my immigrant friends in Los Angeles.
Tierra de influencia hispana desde sus primeros días.
This is the land of influence with the Hispanic evolution.
Esta tierra que ha acogido a un signo de culturas.
This land has embraced a great land of citizens.
Y que a través de nuestra lengua común, el español, se ha constituido en un referente de progreso.
And with this, our language, Spanish, has been a land of progress.
Los más de 180,000 ecuatorianos que ocupan el sur de la Florida.
More than 180,000 citizens that occupy the south of Florida.
Perdón, California.
California, we're in California.
Son una muestra clara de superación y trabajo arduo, característica propia de los ecuatorianos.
This is the best example of hard work of the Ecuadorian people.
A los migrantes, les debemos cada día más respeto.
To the immigrants, we order more respect every day.
Y hoy les decimos a los migrantes ecuatorianos que mi provincia, Guayas, no se aleja de esta realidad.
And we tell today the citizens, the immigrants, the Ecuadorian immigrants, that my city of Guayas...
Guayas is una provincia de migrantes.
Guayas is a province of immigrants.
La casa grande de todos los ecuatorianos.
This is the big house of all the Ecuadorians.
Y con su productividad y crecimiento.
And the productivity and growth.
Siempre los han apoyado en búsqueda de días mejores.
And they're always supporting you when you're looking for better lifestyles.
Los migrantes en Ecuador...
The immigrants in Ecuador.
...han dejado su tierra natal y encontraron en el Guayas una provincia de brazos abiertos.
The immigrants in Ecuador, in Guayas, have left their land, and they have found in Guayas a land of promise and progress.
Yo mismo soy descendiente de migrantes libaneses e italianos.
I am a descendant of Lebanese and Italian immigrants.
Y mis abuelos buscaron una oportunidad en Ecuador y en Guayas.
And my grandparents, they looked for an opportunity in Ecuador and in Guayas.
Y hoy somos parte de ese gran aparato productivo ecuatoriano.
So we are now part of that growth, that machinery that makes Ecuador grow.
Quiero saludar estos 206 años del primer grito de independencia del Ecuador.
I want to salute Ecuador in these 206 years of independence.
Que fue un referente para América.
This was the beginning for America.
Porque siguiendo el ejemplo de Quito...
Because after following the example of Quito...
El 18 de abril de 1810...
On April 18 of 1810.
...lance of su grito de independencia Caracas.
That's when they started the shout of independence and then went into Caracas, Venezuela.
Y más adelante Buenos Aires, México, y Chile.
And then later on, Buenos Aires, México, and Chile.
Aprovecho de nuevo la oportunidad, no solamente para saludar a mis hermanos migrantes ecuatorianos en California.
I take advantage of this opportunity, not only to say hello to all my Ecuadorian immigrants here in California.
sino finalmente para agradecer al pueblo de los Estados Unidos y de California.
And not only that, but I want to thank the citizens of Los Angeles and California.
Que durante tantos años los ha recibido en su seno.
That during so many years, they have embraced them.
Y les ha permitido ser parte de su desarrollo.
And they have allowed them to be part of their growth.
Muchas gracias.
Thank you so much.
Muchísimas gracias, Perfecto Harala, y le damos la bienvenida a la Ciudad de Los Ángeles. Aquí tenemos sus amigos, sus hermanos, y siempre estamos trabajando aquí por el bienestar de los ecuatorianos en Los Ángeles como Ecuador. Gracias. I also wish to thank Alba Berus and to the entire Comité Cívico Ecuadoriano in Los Ángeles for putting together a series of events this week that showcased the Ecuadorian pride, spirit, and culture. I'm happy to celebrate with you all this morning, as is the council and the city of Los Angeles, to recognize the important contributions of the Ecuadorian community in Los Angeles and this very special day in your history. I want to remind everyone as well that this Sunday marks the 17th anniversary of the parade in downtown LA that ends at our historic Olvera Street, similar to the capital of Ecuador, Quito, where there are festivities in Plaza de la Independencia. Here in Los Angeles, festivities will be in our plaza that saw the birth of our great city. I encourage you to join us in this celebration, as there will be delicious Ecuadorian cuisine and traditional performances. I look forward to the music each and every year. Council President Herb Weston just told me he looks forward to the hats each and every year, and he wants, he says his old hat is too old now. He wants a new one, so he wants a new Ecuadorian hat. And so with that, let me present this resolution to Perfecto. Bienvenido, y de parte de la Ciudad de Los Ángeles, le damos esta resolución firmada por todos los concejales, dándole la bienvenida y celebrando este día de Independencia de Ecuador. Felicidades. Gracias.
Thank you, thank you. And council member Weezer, what time do the festivities begin on Sunday?
At 11:00.
At 11:00, where?
Broadway and Ninth.
But the parade is from Broadway and Ninth, all the way down Broadway, and it makes a right on Temple, left on Main, and then it goes up to the Plaza Olvera. And it begins at what time again?
At 9:00, we gather and we start walking at 11:00.
9:00, we gather, we start walking at 11:00. So for you early birds, be there at 9:00. If you want to just get there when the show starts, get there at 11:00. All right.
All right, all right. Thank you very much. Let's give them all.
Oh, okay, sure. Oh, okay, sure, sure. All right, here's those great hats that Herb Wesson was talking about. And here's a hat for Herb. Mr. President, why don't you come on up? And. All right, there you go.
There we go.
Thank you, sir. You gonna put yours on?
Herb, can we get you to put your hat on so we can get a photo of both of you?
I need a smaller size.
Andy Quinn also wants to say hello to some presidents.
Okay. The president, the president. Gracias, gracias, muchísimas gracias. Gracias, gracias.
Thank you.
Gracias, muchísimas gracias. Gracias. Muchísimas gracias. So, Mr. President, thank you very much, and thank you to my colleagues, and we'll see you at the parade, and let's continue celebrating the great diversity we have in the city of Los Angeles. Que viva Ecuador!
All right, thank you.
Viva los Estados Unidos!
Y que viva los Estados Unidos! Y que viva Los Ángeles! Mr. President, Mr. President. Yeah, we're gonna go over here and take pictures. Can I just put my photos up here?
All right, thank you so much. We're gonna go ahead and turn our attention back to the agenda. That concludes the presentations for the day. So with that, we're gonna go ahead and take all the items together, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 and 6. And those were all called "special for cards." Unless, council members, do you have any that you would like to single out? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and group those together for cards. Herman, if you want to come on up on items 1, 2, 3, 4 and 5, you have cards on 1, 2, 3, 4 and 5. And I remind you, before you come up, to stick to the agenda items.
Mr. Schickska, or Schicksa. Regarding CD 11, Mike, Mr. Bonin, I agree with Mr. Bonin. You're fixing our apartment so we can live in a habitable situation and condition. Incidentally, many of these properties in Venice need to be corrected by citation and utterly habitable citations. Now going on to item number two, regarding jazz festival. Isn't that part of jazz, Mr.?
He is not talking about the item.
Yeah, you're not talking about the item.
The culture of jazz, it's music to enjoy. Because if you, you know, there's a lot of noise getting on here, Mr. Englander, you should keep it down. Because my ears can't hear very well over the jazz festival celebration that Mr. Sadio did an excellent job with. No further comment. Now going on to CD 13, on item number three, I understand why Ms. Nury Martinez wants to develop a project to remove a median. Why? Why not make a median that's shapy like this? So it looks more like an hourglass? And we'll paint it green? So that way, people can visually know that there's a median that's been improved by Ms. Nury Martinez?
Children like vacate properties under.
Yeah, this is.
Disgusting, this is clearly off topic.
And it's not on the topic. It's not on the, it's not on the calendar. It's not on the agenda, sir.
For 53P account number 281213, CD 13, redevelopment project services, the Los Angeles Convention Corps for the Design and Engineering Demolition. Dion, correct me, am I on topic, sir? Do I have to technically be on topic, Dion? Let me read it off the agenda again. Ofero Martinez, relative to funding for the Los Angeles. Is it Conservation or Conversation Corps for the Engineering Demol- oh, demolition? Dion, is that a technical word? Demolition? To excavate, does that mean digging, Dion? When you excavate, do you dig? Give me the political correct answer for that, Dion.
Okay, it's, again, it's not on topic, and you're talking to the city attorney. That's your fifth warning today. Your time is up. Thank you, sir. Okay, now you're disrupting the meeting? Now you're disrupting the meeting? You want to continue to disrupt the meeting? Okay, please, you're out of here. You've disrupted the meeting. This is the fifth warning of disrupting the meeting. Please escort him out of the chambers. Thank you very much. Have a nice weekend. You're still disrupting the meeting, sir. We're gonna hold and wait until you go ahead and leave the chambers. You're continuing to shout out from the seats, it's disrupting the meeting. Please, you can make your way out of chambers. We're still waiting. You're still, we're still waiting for you to leave the council chambers as you're continuously disrupting the meeting. We're having to stop the meeting and wait. You're still yelling out from the meeting. Yeah, you're still yelling out from the meeting. Excuse me, you're still yelling out from the meeting, and we'd like you to leave the council chambers. Mr. Walsh on items 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 and 6. Please stay on the agenda items. We'll not give warning. It's been done.
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, at JWalshConfidential, tweeting at HollywoodDems. Item one, this is REAP, Rent Escrow Account Program. You do a good job here. This is a warning to all property owners east of La Brea. If you're west of La Brea, they don't enforce this. But if you allow a code violation, the city will take over your property, as far as your renters will have to pay to the city rather than to you. So let's let that be a warning. Now, number two is the Northeast Jazz Festival, $30,000. I went to the last Northeast Jazz Festival. It lasted for six, seven, eight hours, constant entertainment. It was very good. It celebrates the area, which is largely Hispanic. It's money from Mr. Sadio, and it is well paid since the $30,000 will go largely to musicians who can certainly use the compensation. Number three, funding of the Los Angeles Conservation Corps for the demolition and excavation of an existing media island. You know, we have the worst sidewalks in America, and what are you doing? You're spending enormous amounts of money, $30,000, tearing up a, excuse me, $146,000, tearing up a median. The medians are there for a reason. They're there for the most abused people in the city of Los Angeles, that is, the pedestrians. It is an island, and to save you in the middle of traffic, so you don't have to cross, particularly people who have handicaps, they don't have to get across the street. Because the city has decided that the countdown clock starts, and you're not at a median island, you will get a ticket. That's what the police are doing right now. Besides shooting and killing blacks, they are giving out tickets. We need every single media island. I challenge one person of 4 million in the city of Los Angeles to say that we have too many media islands in the city. Let's spend over a quarter, $146,000. Now, again, these are the reward offers. Remember, snitches get stitches. Nobody applies for a reward. Because the gangs have people inside the LAP, inside the city council, inside the city. If anybody applies for these rewards, for the death of Clinton Hibbert and Kenneth Patterson, this is an extension. Well, you can extend, it happened in 2008. You've been extending it for eight years, seven years. Nobody is gonna get killed, no one's gonna get slashed. You've seen the shirt, Snitches Get Stitches, available on Hollywood Boulevard with a blood drop.
You're not on topic.
I'm on the topic of Clinton and Hibbert and the reward. I'm saying, anybody who applies for a reward will be killed! They will be killed by the gangs! And if that's not on subject, Mr. White Guy, you're running for a supervisor.
Now you're off topic, so.
Now, the sexual predator, teardrop rapist is the next one. The teardrop rapist is reinstating the reward. Again, reward after reinstatement after reinstatement. And the only person who's favored these rewards is the scumbag person running this move.
All right, again, thank you very much. Time is up, Mr. Walsh. Daniel Gus. 4, 5 and 6, items 4, 5 and 6.
Things would, Daniel Gus, things would go a lot more swimmingly if you give people a chance to.
Stay on topic, please.
How am I off topic? You don't know what the fuck I'm talking about. You see, I'm gonna respond. I said three fucking words, and you start doing that bullshit?
You're not on topic. Now you're disrupting the meeting. So that's your second warning.
Mm-hmm, okay. Then I will issue some unedited comments then. It's a, number four is a great fucking idea. It's a great fucking idea. I'm on topic. Number four is a great fucking idea. I love it so fucking much. You know, I think $75,000 should be the motherfucking reward. And I have some insights on it, but, you know, I'm staying on topic. I'm staying on topic, and I just tell you, it's a motherfucking, ball-busting, great idea. That's number four. I'm gonna move to number five now. This, too, is a motherfucking great idea. I'm gonna be on topic. This is the right thing to do to solve crime in your goddamn motherfucking agenda. I love this amount. I'm on topic because $75,000 goddamn dollars is the right amount. And maybe it'll fucking work this term, because it didn't fucking work last time. So goddamn it, I think it's a great idea. And I'm happy that Mr. Harris Dawson is representing CD 8.
Yes.
It is refreshing.
Speakers to respect, at least the children that are in the room. Children didn't do anything to them. They don't have any beef with them, so I don't see why they have to use such vulgar language in their presence.
Hold his time for a second. I appreciate that, and that is another reminder that there are children present, and if you want to respect them at a minimum, but if not.
No. I respect.
Certainly your First Amendment, right.
I respect the First Amendment, and the First Amendment allows me to express myself based on the temperature of the room. And the temperature of the room is hostile. And I don't care who else is listening. I think it's a great fucking reward amount. And that's item number five. I have a couple of minutes to talk about item number six, and here's the lesson. The lesson is that I respect Mr. Wesson, and I'm not gonna swear on item number six because he knows how to deal with me, and he is fair. The LA Times in its recent grade of Mr. Wesson.
You're not on, you're not on topic.
I sure am.
You are not on topic.
I sure am.
That is not, excuse me, the LA Times is not on the agenda.
Watch me then, I'm quoting the LA Times about Mr. Wesson.
Mr. Wesson is not on the agenda.
It's his item, number six. Jesus.
Excuse me. Yeah, that's your final warning, because you've been off topic about five times now, so we'll forfeit the rest of your time. You can have a seat. Thank you, sir. Excuse me, you're disrupting the meeting? Okay, you're still disrupting the meeting. That's the third time now you've disrupted the meeting. Have a seat and be quiet. You're disrupting the meeting. Marion, I'm on 2, 4 and 5.
Are you addressing me?
Yes, ma'am. Items 2, 4 and 5.
Okay, it's a replication of the fee waivers, folks. And you need to vote these people out of office to put this in. This is just another rubber stamp way of spending money that the city has a shortfall and needs to be dealt with. We need not to pay more taxes for this ridiculous thing, so they need to raise their own money, this jazz festival. Onto 4 and 5. The death of Clinton Hibbert, Heppert, and Kenneth Patterson are victims that have, our lives are cheap. And folks, there is no way that we're going to get any consolation for it, except that the victims are going to be asking for more laws that be against law-abiding citizens. And this is not right, that you should take it out on law-abiding citizens. Their civil rights, First and Second Amendments are at jeopardy because of this. We need large-capacity weapons so they protect themselves, to defend themselves against gangs and terrorists and criminals alike, lone wolves that are out there to murder and destroy our country. These are the poor victims that are here, that are, that I feel a lot of sympathy and compassion for them, and the women against gun violence. I love you very much, and you should be not against law-abiding citizens, you should be against, for criminal control, because we cannot go on giving out these rewards for these people. It's a terrible thing. The sexual predators, that's an awful thing, too. And that needs to be incarceration. They need to have something on their leg, and it's a very serious infraction. So we can't take these lightly. We can't just say criminals will change themselves and reform themselves and then pass outrageous gun laws, that you think that's gonna solve the problem of the victims and our citizens to be protected. We gotta back up the police and be together, united. We stand, or divided, we fall. And that's the constellation that we have to do here to protect our Constitution and our Bill of Rights. So I'm just letting you know that the gun laws and everything that's against citizens, we will repeal them. So if you think you're going to think it's a victory, it's not. It will be fought in court.
She is not talking about these items now.
Okay, you're not, you're not on the subject, ma'am.
I'm just saying that the victims are going to fight against these gun laws, against the kind of thing.
Gun laws are not, that's not on, that's not on the topic.
No.
Okay, so I, we've told you already. Thank you very much. Thanks for your time. Okay, with that, Eric Previn on item 6.
Now, should I not be afforded the same time as others? Because I also signed up for other items, as you recall.
I have one card for item 6 left, sir.
And I also signed up for item 35 from the last meeting, which you continued, sir.
Sir, you're on, you're on item 6.
Item 6 has to do with the Wesson Price motion. July 1st, Herb Wesson was reappointed to be the council president, and. And the committee structure that's currently in place is one which you all are very familiar with. Mondays through Wednesdays, there are meetings at various times. Thursday, no meetings. Friday, there's a very early morning government-changing-the-rules meeting. But that's how it works, and a couple of those meetings are regular, obviously, Krikorian's Budget Finance, and I think the planning one is a regular weekly meeting. The others are on alternate weeks, so it's hard to follow. Here's the thing, and this one is pointing out that we're going to work on the unemployment thanks to Mr. Harris-Dawson joining the team. He'll be taking a big role there. Folks, this, this meeting is in disarray. Mr. Krikorian tried very hard to make the point that it's about the public. It's not about the public. It's about the structure. By having agendas, as you produce, and I've been to a number of meetings of other jurisdictions that have items at committee meeting, and then when the public comes to the big city council meeting where it's finally approved, nobody can speak on it, what you do is you invite a kind of activity around the portal where the public interacts with the government that invites mockery and lunacy. And, Mr. Harris-Dawson, Mr. Harris-Dawson, I would appreciate, since you're so new to this process, you should probably pay attention to the public when you speak.
Oh, you're not, you're not, please do not address the members, and that's not on topic.
Please do not interrupt me ever again, sir. Okay? It is a violation...
I'm going to run this meeting, and you are off-topic, and so I'm letting you know if you don't fall, if you don't stay on topic, and you're calling out specific council members, then you'll be asked to forfeit your time. That's your last warning.
To you, sir. I'm speaking directly to you. You run the meeting with an iron fist, but you do not understand the rules...
Okay, now, you're off-topic again, and so, thank you very much. You can save that for general public comment. Your time is up. Thank you, sir. With that, Donna on items two, four, and five.
Hello, I'm Donna. You're off-topic. Okay, anyway, thought I'd do it for you. Okay, here, number two is $30,000 for this special Jazz event, which shows another way that you're transferring money for things that have to be in that area, to try and come up with something cute with a Jazz Festival. And it basically, it really looks like another, even though it's transferring funds, it does look like a special event of, and I'll be off-topic, you could have spent on video conferencing. So, anyway, so I don't think we need to spend the $30,000, transferring money, the $30,000 when we're having a big problem to have a Jazz Festival. Let the people pay for the event, where they come in with, you know, fees to, you know, money for people who want to see the Jazz Festival should be paying for the Jazz Festival. Okay, back over here on number four. The death of Clifton Jr. and Kenneth Patterson for six months. Nobody's going to do that, because snitches get stitches, and it shows you that people should be able to defend themselves. There are people out there that are murdering people, and people should be able to, if police officers can be able to protect themselves, and, and different people can, and rich people have people behind them, and politicians have people behind them with guns can protect themselves. The normal, your average person should be able to protect themselves also. So, I don't want to be on this podium saying, "A rule of Martian for Donna Perman," or anybody I know, because they took away the ability to defend myself. So, these gun laws are terrible laws, and should be repealed. And just like number six with the sexual predator...
On two, four, and five.
Yeah, number five, the reward motion for sexual predator, the teardrop rapist. Oh, my God, now we have to worry about a teardrop rapist? There's, that's as much, when some people are raping, that's just as much as if they killed a woman. So, one of them goes out and somehow they kill that teardrop rapist, then we won't have to get a reward motion, because I, there's no amount that will ever be enough to, that's like, nobody will do a, do that, put that person in, because they'll be scared that this teardrop rapist, or he'll know somebody that will go along and take care of them. Anyway, I got to go off of this thing. It's a bad idea. Snitches get stitches. And let's bring back video conferencing. Thank you.
Great, thank you. That concludes public comment on all those items. Mr. O'Farrell, did you wish to speak on one of the items as well?
Mr. President, I just want to say, I'm so excited about the project that is item three today, and that is the greening of a landscape in Elysian Valley, one block from the Los Angeles River, along Riverside Drive. Los Angeles is one of the most paved cities in the entire world, so we're removing a one-block-long stretch of asphalt that's been there for as long as anyone can remember. And we're going to do a sustainable landscaping with a monument sign for Elysian Valley. This particular median does not provide and never has provided any sort of pedestrian access. It's simply an ugly asphalt median with weeds growing out of it. So, the fact that we're greening this one little section is a really wonderful thing for the community of Elysian Valley, and it also will help the aquifer. And I think it's really important that, as public policy, we green every piece of property in the public right of way that we possibly can as we reach toward a more sustainable future for Los Angeles. So, I'm very excited about this project, very excited to work with Conservation Corps and the community, who has been asking for this for a long, long time. So, I'm excited to be moving forward with this particular project, and it should be in the ground by next year. So, I just wanted to talk about this wonderful new improvement for the incredible community of Elysian Valley in my district. Thank you.
Excellent. No, thank you very much with that. With that, we'll go ahead and open the roll on all the items, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Ten eyes.
Thank you very much. And we'll go ahead and turn it over to public, general public comment now. Bradley Hertz. And Brad, you had two cards filled out for public comment. I don't know if you meant to do two cards?
I did. One is regarding the LA City Health Commission, and another one is in a volunteer capacity.
So, it's only one card per public comment? And you could talk about both in your minute, if you'd like?
Okay.
And we'll go ahead and note both, but...
Thank you. I'll do that. Good morning. Thank you for meeting here in the valley. I'm Bradley Hertz of the Sutton Law Firm, wearing two hats this morning. First, on behalf of the AIDS Healthcare Foundation and its executive director, Michael Weinstein, to thank the council for its actions to date on the LA City Health Commission. Four appointees have been named, 11 appointees still need to be named. There is an initial staff in place through the city council, or through the city clerk's office, and initial funding in place. And time is of the essence. This commission will be important in terms of monitoring public health issues, monitoring whether the county public health department is properly delivering services to the city of LA. So, we thank you and request that the 11 members appoint commissioners as soon as possible. Secondly, I'm wearing a volunteer hat for the California Prostate Cancer Coalition. September is Prostate Cancer Month, and I was surprised to see nothing on calendar with the city, so I would ask the city to work on that.
Thank you, thank you very much. Thank you. Alexenko? Monica? Followed by Lila?
Good morning. Good morning. I am extremely concerned as I drive in Van Nuys, North Hollywood, and Wilshire Boulevard, and throughout Los Angeles, and I see utility poles being increased in height and voltage, while seeing wiring loosely strung across major boulevards. The danger seems obvious, as it is most definitely dangerous for the health of all citizens. We need DWP to be held accountable. We are also seeing towers for cellphones, some extremely imposing in stature on medical buildings, government buildings, close to apartments and homes. There has been no notification in most instances to the citizens. We ask and need our elected voices to speak out in order to protect, preserve, and defend us. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Lila, followed by Stephanie Munoz?
Good morning, Mr. President and council members. My name is Lila Gorin. I'm the community outreach manager for the AIDS Healthcare Foundation. I'm here today with some of our patient advocates to speak about the City Health Commission. As a community outreach manager, I have witnessed many of the public health issues affecting the residents of Los Angeles. Currently, we have 24,000 HIV-positive people not receiving care in LA County. Many of them are residents of the city. We felt confident that once the appointment of the Health Commission is finalized, the City Health Commission will be, will work hard to implement solutions to address health disparities among people living with HIV and AIDS in Los Angeles. There is no reason to delay this process anymore. We thank the four council members, they already have appointed commissioners, and we ask the remaining 11 to follow their lead as soon as possible. We thank you for your time. Have a wonderful day.
All right, thank you very much. So, Stephanie, followed by, is it Mauro or Mayo? Scott?
Hi, good morning. My name is Stephanie Munoz, and I'm here today to ask you to start appointing the health commissioners. As Lila already talked about, it's very important, and I heard, and I was very happy, that over a year ago, they created, the city approved to create a health commission, but we only have four. So, we'd like to have the remaining 11. My mom is an HIV-positive woman, so for me, it's very important to have the health commission looking over the health of all of us Angelenos. So, I'm very thankful that, you know, we have the four, but I'd like to have the rest appointed. So, thank you for your time.
Right, no, thank you.
Good morning, council.
Good morning.
My name is Mario Scott. I'm an HIV survivor for the past 28 years. Last year, I spoke before you to thank you for adopting the Health Protection Act. I was very proud of this body for taking the health of Angelenos as a priority. Today, I'm here to ask that the remaining 11 council to start appointing health commissioners. This is a time to act on the promise you made to us. We applaud the councils that have appointed commissioners. To the other 11, I will ask you to do the same. Please don't delay the work of the health commissioner anymore. I thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Candido.
Is this public comment?
Yes, general public comment.
May I follow Mr. Kamara, sir?
Um...
Thank you.
Well, I called your card first, but go ahead, John. Come on up.
Good morning, council members. John Kamara, member of the Van Nuys Neighborhood Council. Welcome to Van Nuys. Today, I would like to give thanks to Captain Rick Pearson and the firemen of Fire Station 93 for honoring my grandfather, World War II veteran, Chiro Camara, who passed away last week. The kindness they showed to my family was remarkable and greatly appreciated. My grandfather loved this city and would have been so happy to know that the great city would have to honor him by lowering the flag in his honor. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, candido.
Thank you, Mr. President. Candido Maris, proud, proud resident of the 12th District. Thank you for being here in the San Fernando Valley. I, too, would like to thank Fire Station 93 for honoring Mr. Chick Camara, a World War II veteran, and God bless him, and may he rest in peace. But I'm going to ask Mr. Wesson and you, Mr. Inger, to place a motion before the city council, asking the Los Angeles Fire Department that when a family member or someone from the community comes and says, "Let's honor our veterans who are dying," that you place that motion so that we can honor those veterans. We're losing too many of our grandparents who have served this country, our parents who have served this country, our brothers and sisters who have served this country. The greatest city in the greatest country, Los Angeles, can lead in honoring our veterans. Mr. President, Mr. Vice President, I hope that you can do that.
All right, thank you very much. Thank you, candido.
Hello. So, welcome to our new council members to Van Nuys. It is awesome, it is wonderful to see you all here. I am looking forward to a robust debate about the mobility plan next week. I still have not seen any inclusions about skateboard infrastructure. I know that's not like, that's not a well-studied field of infrastructure yet, but I think if we're going to plan that far ahead in the future, we should think about the fastest-growing mode of self-power transportation in the city of Los Angeles. In the recent metro boarding studies, it shows that it's almost as high in bus ridership as bicycles, and it's a lot easier to get on a bus than a bicycle, but there's still no bike parking at City Hall. So, please, come back here to Van Nuys more often. I'd love to see you here more than once every two months. Once every two weeks would be great, and please, and thank you for giving us some valley issues when you're here in the valley. Have a great day.
Thank you very much. You have a great day, too.
John Walsh at HollywoodHighlands.org. We have a big election coming up. This is for Fifth District Supervisor, mostly Glendale and Pasadena and Points East. Anybody but Englander for supervisor. He's desperately trying to get out of this job. In fact, Englander tells people, "The reason you should vote for me is to have mercy on me, so I'm not, I have to listen to John Walsh and the rest of them at city council." Englander is a Republican who is pretending to be a Democrat, because the numbers of Democrat in the Fifth District are rising as minorities move in there and as old white Republicans die off. Anybody but Englander for supervisor. Anybody but for supervisor, but Mr. Englander. That's it.
What goes on in the national scene relates to the community here local. Communism is well and alive, and it's spreading. It's coming here to Los Angeles from Obama, from Washington. And, folks, they're out just to get your guns, take away your civil rights and your right to freedom of speech. They tried to censor everything, and the news media especially, they're very far-leftists. They do everything to the left, far left, way over. Now, Chuck Schumer came out against the Iranian deal. Listen, folks, they're going to sell those nukes to South and North Korea, and it's going to affect Los Angeles here. If you think that, boy, it's only going to affect the rest of the world, think again, because it's going to affect us all. So, I'm just telling you, take a deep breath and don't vote for another Obama. Please don't. Thank you.
Anyone by King Englander for supervisor. And it was wrong of the city council to have few speakers on number seven last week and didn't let me speak on it. All for the measure, oh, the ones who got to speak was all for the measure, none against. All because people don't tell the children how to treat guns. Now, all people have to lock up or disable their weapons. So, I said, what are you supposed to say? "Mr. Butler, can you give me time that I can get my gun out of my lock container?" So, that's not going to be done. Anyway, we're in an unsafe situation because of Obama. We're in a sanctuary city, having to deal with criminals that come over from Mexico, and we're having to deal with dictators like Iran, because after we did, to deal with Iran, we are not safe. So, we should be able to protect ourselves. And in the meantime, oh, yeah, and Obama, he's taken away, they're making the, the healthcare go so high that it's taken away by...
Thank you. Eric? Eric, you've got two cards, but it's just, again, as the first speaker also had two cards, it's just one minute on general public comment. Yeah, Eric Previn? I, you had filled out two for general public comment, but that's okay.
No, sir, I filled out one for general public comment. Thank you. Take, just, let's, let's not argue about the time, sir. I'm going to try to be polite, as usual. I don't want to argue and fight with anybody. I don't want to be hectored during my remarks. And I would like to mainly address, I guess, Council President Wesson, but I don't think it's fair to leave it all on his shoulders, because though he's widely loved by all, this meeting needs a little repair. And here's my proposal, and you can take it at face value. And here's my proposal, and you can take it at face value. You could reject it instantly. For six months, why don't we try anything that appears on the city council agenda? Anything, whether it was met in committee earlier, whether it's open or not, we should just, if somebody has come to the hall, or to this hall, let him speak. Now, we may get flooded with a variety of characters that will make it impossible to do business. Or alternatively, we may flood the zone with people who have things to say about issues that they missed. We, every single meeting, and I'm not gonna do a PRA on this, yet, we turn away hundreds of speakers a year who didn't understand that they can't speak on it. Now, we have the jurisdiction to change that, to open it up. That is Council President Wesson. He's a good man. Everybody understands that. So let's do it. Thanks.
Great, thank you very much.
Yeah, some chair of the Anybody But Englander Committee. He is a self-hating Jew who married a shiksa. The LA Times today, hey, it's true. That's what happens when you raise the temperature. The LA Times today gave Mayor Eric Garcetti a C grade, a C, for Mayor Eric Garcetti, including a D on political coverage, a C minus on leadership, and it is a reflection that he came here as a former city councilman. Everybody read the LA Times, and how it gave Mr. Garcetti a C, and how previously it said "Your disdain for public commentary is..." By the way, there were no children in the room when I spoke last. Mr. Garcetti had a very interesting meeting about the Three Animal Services protests at his house. The protest organizers asked me what I thought they should do next, and I said they should bring the protest to Mr. Coletta's neighborhood, and I think they will, with a Twitter war and a visit to city council.
Thank you very much. That concludes general public comment, and I don't believe we have any other items before us. Do we have any announcements, colleagues? Seeing none. Does anybody have any adjourning motions?
Mr. President, council has motions for post and a referral.
Yes, we'll go ahead and post and refer those. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Seeing no adjourning motions, that concludes the agenda, and we are adjourned. Have a great weekend and be safe. Thank you.